All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the August 15th, 2022 Crest Hill Works City Council Meeting to be in order at 7:00 PM. I would ask everyone, please rise with the pledge of allegiance to the flag. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under our, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Ray Solomon.
Yes.
Glenn Conklin.
Present.
Scott Dyke.
Here.
John Rocher.
Here.
Darrell Jefferson.
Here.
Claudia Gazal.
Here.
Tina Oberlin.
President.
Mark Sapiti.
Here.
Nate Albert.
Here.
And Joe Kubal.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, we do not have a business promotion this evening, so we'll go ahead with the agenda items. First is the approval of the minutes from the city council meeting held on August 1st, 2022. Motion would be in order.
Some move.
Present.
We have motion by Alderman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Rocher for the approval of the August 1st, 2022 city council meeting minutes. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Rocher.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Second we have the minutes of the work session held on July 25th, 2022. Motion would be in order.
Some move. Present.
We have motion by Alderman Jefferson, seconded by Alderman Rocher for the approval of the minutes of the July 25th, 2022 work session. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Rocher.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Next, we have the minutes of the work session held on August 4th, 2022. Motion would be in order.
Some move.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for the approval of the minutes of the work session held on August 4th, 2022. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
John Rocher.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Was that, what was the date for that one?
Eight-four.
Eight-four?
Uh-huh.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Abstained.
Motion carries.
And last, we have the minutes of the work session held on August 10th, 2022. Motion would be in order.
Some move.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for the approval of the August 10th, 2022 work session minutes. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Abstained.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Rocher.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next is our city attorney, Mike Steph. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I was unsure as to where this should go on business. I do not usually insert memos or start items, so I had it under new business. It's on the agenda under city attorneys, so I will address the resolution that was discussed at the August 10th work session. I was asked to draft a resolution amending the purchasing policy. The resolution should be in your packet. The purchasing policy, as I indicated on August 10th, was going to be a redlined version. The more I got into it, the more I realized that this is really a general, it was not designed to be an emergency purchasing policy. It has a special section for emergency purchases. So I got, as far as I could, to be able to make it onto this agenda packet with some red lines, but I didn't want to make changes that you didn't want changed. As I said in the memo, perhaps what you actually want to do is create an emergency purchasing policy and then amend the general purchasing policy in some fashion to remove certain things that, but I think that simply making this an emergency purchasing policy leaves a void as to how purchases are made on a day-to-day basis.
Is there a way that we can table this? Because there's a lot of big discussions. It seems like we opened this big kind of warm, the more I'm looking at it, I have like a lot of highlights pages here of the things that we need to discuss. It seems like we changed one section and it opens a kind of warm on the other section. Is there any way we can table this and have it in private, like in the work session? It's not a city council discussion?
Sure. I second that motion. I think that as my memo set out, I think it really deserves a full work session.
Yes, because it's like, I have a lot of highlight sections that, it's not going to benefit a lot of the department heads either, like you said, like the whole idea of small market emergency.
We had one, it's probably 20, 25 years ago, you probably remember that, and it was strictly for the treatment plan.
Right, we changed it when Heather was here, but I'd like to see a copy of that last resolution we had for this prior to, so if we could have a copy of that to see, you know, what was all in that one.
Yeah.
Prior to this new one being put before us as part of the discussion, just to see what changes there are where it was before. As I read Heather's memo, it had been in effect since 2009. I don't know whether it had been changed at all between '09 and 2019, in those 10 years, but I have not seen the 2009 policy either. So I don't know who has.
Chris, would you have that?
Yeah, we'll look it up.
Thank you, Chris. And can we have this on the next work session, please?
Absolutely.
The next work session?
As in?
As in the very next one?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion to table the resolution amending the purchasing policy by Alderman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Albert. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Rocher.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Mike, thanks for your work that you did in the last few days, it was kind of a short timeline. Appreciate that.
Anything else, Mike?
I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Any questions of city attorney?
Anything else.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, city administrator. Our city administrator, Jim Marino. Good evening, Jim.
Good evening. I don't have anything on the agenda. I just have one item I want to mention. At a previous meeting, I brought to you change orders for the city center building that Harbor Contractors has been working on. Those are the ones that were part of that list. We reviewed, and I brought to you the ones that they had ready, and I mentioned that we were going to have to bring some additional ones to you because they were still compiling that information and getting information from the contractors, so that needs to come to you for another meeting. And in looking at the calendar, the next regular meeting isn't until September 6th. And in talking with Harbor, if possible, they'd like to have that approved sooner so they can move things along and not delay ordering materials and scheduling the contractors. So I want to mention the possibility of having a special regular work session on August 29th. That's possible, and at that time, those other change orders can be brought to you, and I had mentioned previously that we would also have to present the cost for the dais, because the architect is working on that, and that should be ready for the 29th, and then also furniture. And then I think I mentioned in one of my reports, there's also some fitness equipment for the police department that they want to consider.
So you said a special work session?
No, a special regular meeting, is what I meant.
Well, I know, but that's not what you said. That's why it's.
Oh, I'm sorry. I meant.
Because we can't vote at a work session, so it would have to be a special meeting. Am I correct?
Yes, I heard him too. He spoke, obviously.
No, I just want to clarify that.
Yeah, I meant regular session.
A regular meeting, not a work session.
I'm sorry, regular meeting, yes.
Okay, no.
Does that need to be a motion?
Some move just presented.
Well, hold on. Since when we vote to have a work session?
It's a council, special council.
It's not a work session, it's going to be a special city council meeting.
Oh, a special city council meeting. Okay, okay. Got you, got you. Okay, yes.
Okay, we have motion by Alderman Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Albert for a city council meeting on August 29th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Rocher.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
And Nate Albert.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Anything else, Jim?
I don't have anything else.
Any questions for city administrator?
No, I would like to make a statement made. As in any municipalities or government entity, resolutions, ordinance, and rules are established to provide a professional framework for conducting business. City business include great numbers of items from purchasing services to the community, to employment, as well as other responsibilities. I wish to speak to employment. It comes no surprise that the city council learned of another resignation, and I do understand this occurs in other municipality. However, the frequency is disturbing, and recent months, staff has reached out to elected officials stating that they have exalted their intent to have their concerns heard. They have followed the chain of command as the rules state, but have not gotten answers. In desperation, they have reached out to elected officials. I must state that I'm uncomfortable listening to the city staff with regard to the day-to-day business of the city, but fault my duty to try to do something. My concerns were to assemble a list of issues and place them before the city administrator for his review and response, organizing a meeting as a listening session seemed by only Avenue. Unfortunately, this avenue was met by a disciplinary by the city administrator and a message properly crafted with help of the city attorney, and that's not Mr. Steph, that would be another attorney, not wishing to overstep my authority to create the spontaneous actions taken toward the city staff I relent. The morale has now reached its lowest point, and resignation continues. We have the most dedicated, hardworking, and loyal staff we ever had in this city, a staff who gets the job done. And I hope, I hope we start waking up and realizing that it's time to start taking our staff in consideration, and it breaks my heart to see the way things are going right now. It does. That's it.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks, Jim. Moving on to our public works department, our director of public works, Mark Seifer. Good evening, Mark.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have two agenda items for you this evening. Both stem from the August 4th special work session we had. I want to thank you once again for your participation in that meeting. The first agenda item I have is a notice of intent to award a contract to Vissarine Construction for reconstruction of the West Plant Wastewater Treatment Facility in the amount of $50,640,000. This would be as part of the discussion we had on August 4th to send the notice of intent down. Staff will work with Strand and Vissarine towards a goal of saving $2 million in project costs.
Mark, before I make a move on that motion, which I will do, I just think the public, anybody watching, needs to understand just how important this project is to the city, and maybe you could just give a little capsule on that so they understand, because that's such a large number, and if I was sitting at home and I heard that, I know what I would think.
Understood.
So could you just capsulize quickly?
Hundred, hundred percent. So the West Wastewater Treatment Plant was originally built in 1960 with an upgrade in '94. It is the treatment plant on the corner of Gaylord Road in Theodore. Many residents drive past and don't even know it's there. It takes approximately one-half of the wastewater flow to the city at this point. It has the ability to take up to two-thirds. Currently, it's rated for 1.3 million gallons with a little bit of future growth. We'll have that up to over 2 million gallons. Unfortunately, right now, with the plant being as old it is, we still have some parts that are from 1960, and as you know, with the world right now, with technology, we can't find those parts. Even the parts that were installed in '94, we have staff making our own replacement parts. This, as we've talked at this table, every few years, the EPA comes out with new regulations and items that we need to remove from wastewater before we put it back into the receiving waters, which would be for that plant, the Rock Run Creek. So this plant would allow us to remove phosphorus, get ready to remove copper, and hit all the limits that were required to hit on a daily basis to put clean water back into our, into nature. So this plant, this plant is desperate for an upgrade. It originally went out to bid in 2013. Those bids were rejected, and so now we are here in 2022, looking at a price tag of $50 million. But this will give, this will give staff an up to, no, an up to, up-to-date treatment plant and a top-notch facility to run, so.
Thank you. Some move just presented.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Albert for a motion to approve a notice of intent to award a contract to Vissarine Construction Company for reconstruction of the West Plant Wastewater Treatment Facility in the amount of $50,640,000. Questions or comments?
I do have one comment. I believe it was, was it like 10 years ago, we went there and filmed it?
Yeah.
I did with the cable.
You and Candy, yeah.
Yeah, and at that time, conditions were deplorable, just deplorable.
We were trying to look through that video just for fun.
Yeah, well, I just want the public viewing this to understand, this isn't a whim, this isn't a wish list, this is a necessity for our city, and quite a costly one, I understand, but I wish everyone had seen that video, because it's an eye-opener. It's an eye-opener. Thank you.
Question. Mark, you said, and Tina just said it, well, this is the second time you're bringing this forward?
Yes. So originally, in 2013, this was brought forward. The bids came overbid by a couple million dollars, and at that point, at that point, it was estimated 18 million. It came in at 20 million in 2013, 2013, and at that time, the city council rejected the bids, and in order to kind of, at that time, asked us to get it through a few more years. So we did, and now, now it really needs to get redone, so.
Okay, I just needed to clarify that.
Yeah, not a problem. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, roll call, please.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Rocher.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
And Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
The second agenda item I have is to approve the execution of a proposal with Strand and Associates for construction engineering services for the West Plant Wastewater Treatment Facility construction in the amount of not to exceed amount of $3,720,000. This will be paid over five fiscal years, with the first payment being of $400,000 this fiscal year, and the remaining $830,075 in every fiscal year up until FY 2027. Payments would be, the first payment would be made now, and then the next payments will all be in May after the budget passes. This will, this will get us through construction, get us through warranty, and this will start their clock now on getting this done. So this will be for day-to-day, you see all the items listed, where it starts with requests for information and shop drawings, where it gets to day-to-day, day-to-day construction management, and gets us all the way through the cleanup of it. Worked very close with city engineer Weideman on this. He gave his blessing on this after working with Strand on making some changes, so I'll be happy to answer any questions, but we are looking for approval and execution of the proposal with Strand.
Some move just presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Gazal for the approval of the execution of a proposal with Strand and Associates for construction engineering services for the West Plant Wastewater Treatment Facility construction in the amount not to exceed $3,720,000. Questions or comments? Roll call.
I'm sorry, who handles the billing on, or the bidding on that? Do you submit for that offer bid? I noticed that under the services not included, the bidding-related services for the plant?
That's on, that's on their past contract for design.
Thank you.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Rocher.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
And Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
As the agenda items, I do have two announcements. The first being, we just got word that the paint for the fire hydrants has come in, so they're scheduling us in September, so we'll get the exact dates out for the fire hydrants being painted. And second of all, we have set the second and third weeks of October will be hydro flushing again, so getting it out there now. The second, third weeks of October will be hydro flushing, so obviously, as you know me, I get my PR out there early, and there'll be a lot more of it. So that's all I have. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Will the hydrant flushing still be conducted at night?
Absolutely. Yep, that's a process that will never change.
What year is this for the hydrant painting? Six?
Five or six.
Five or six.
It started in 17, so it should be five.
Is this the finish, the painting?
No.
No, we got two, seven years, isn't it?
Five, this will be year five, we have five, six, and seven left, so three years left, and then we'll start all over again. Now, the plan that I originally brought to council was a seven-year process, and then after seven years, start over again. Yep, and that was just to sort of flatline the budget and have a consistent dollar amount for your painting every year.
The white crossing lines, they look nice. That's you?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Both of you, they look nice. They stand out. My community, I love it. Good job.
Great, thanks, Mark. Moving on to our city engineer, Ron Weideman. Good evening, Ron.
I just have one item on the agenda for tonight. In your packet, there is a memo there. I went out for bid using motor fuel taxes for pavement patching. Streets in which patching is going to be done this year are listed in the memo. We have three bidders that turned in bids for this, so tonight, what I'm looking for is award, to award the contract to PT Farrow Construction for the 2022 motor fuel tax pavement patching contract in the amount of $226,343.20. Does anybody have any questions?
Budgeted amount versus actual?
Budgeted amount, we had just said a hundred thousand. We, there will be no overall change in the MFT budget. Money's being taken from other line items in the budget. When we put the budget together, there was going to be patching on some of the street servicing contracts. We took that patching out and made it a patching-only contract, so I brought those contracts down. That extra money is being used here to cover the additional funding, but the overall MFT budget as approved is not changing.
Motion would be in order?
Some move. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Albert to award contract to PT Farrow Construction Company for the 2022 motor fuel tax pavement patching contract in the amount of $226,343.20. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
And John Rocher.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor, unless there's any other questions.
Any questions of city engineer? All right, thanks, Ron. Moving on, community development. Our community development director, Tony Budzikowski, went home ill this afternoon, so we'll move forward with police department, our police chief, Ed Clark. Good evening, Ed.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have before you this evening the police special events, police services agreement with the Crest Hill Lions for their lion do-out. It is on September 4th. The hours are from 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM, and that'll be for two officers, so I'd be asking approval of that contract and agreement.
Some move just presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Gazal for the approval of ordinance authorizing special events for police services. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
John Rocher.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Abstained.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
And Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
That's all I have for the agenda. I would like to thank everybody who came out to our recent national night out. I think it was a great event. I was kind of overwhelmed with the turnout. It ran, ran like a sewing machine. I mean, it really went well. I do thank a lot of the people that work with the city as well that volunteered their time and their services. I was very thankful for that. Crime prevention officer Heidi Alwad did a great job organizing, making sure everything was running. I think it's what we've been wanting to do for a lot of years, and we finally got there. Just one more step, and it's really just trying to infuse our department in with the community, and so I saw a lot of high fives and a lot of things like that between kids and parents, and I think just being able to have that conversation with, in a good, positive atmosphere was a big plus for us. So thank you, everybody. The other thing is, we have Friday. We have our cop on the rooftop. It's going to be in our local Dunkin' Donuts, Dunkin', I should say, excuse me, 1724 Plainfield Road. Officers will be out between 5:00 in the morning and 1:00. We'll be looking for donations. We'll be selling t-shirts, coffee mugs, the usual stuff. It's a really fun event. They will be up on the roof this year. I will not, but they will be up here.
Who's going to wear the donut?
Usually, usually the newest rookie wears the donut. We'll see if that's, he's a big guy, so I don't know if he's going to allow that to happen. But yeah, it's another great event, and I think it's just as good for the officers as it is for everybody else, too. They like seeing that positivity, and it's good for everybody around. So thank you, and I look forward to seeing everybody there.
It's Friday?
Yes.
Questions? Police chief.
Just a comment to piggyback on the national night out. It was amazing, amazing, well-done job.
Thank you.
And be close to public works. They did. They're the guys behind it. I mean, there was a lot of work preparation that they had to do, so good job to everyone.
They do a great job. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Yes, that was amazing. Good, good community outreach. A lot of people from work, too. I was shocked how many people came out. Yeah, a lot of people.
It was good. The helicopter fly out, but that was kind of neat. So I'm just, like I said, this is one of those things we wanted to get to, and we're getting there, so yeah, I'm very happy with it.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know Heidi did a fantastic job with that for the first time. It was well-attended, and it seemed like everybody had a good time, but I know there was a lot of other people behind the scenes that helped her out on the police side, the public work side, and everything else, so.
A lot of volunteers, a lot of people giving up their time, yeah.
It was good, so hopefully we'll have it again next year again, so. Okay, thanks. Moving on to the mayor's report. First, I had a, some certificates for our Eagle Scout Award. They were supposed to be here this evening, so I will give them a call tomorrow, and we will try to reschedule it maybe for the next city council meeting on September 6th. My agenda item is the veto and return of amended ordinance number 1918 to city council. Ordinance amending Title II of Administration and Personnel and Chapter 26, Finance Director of the City of Crest Hill City Code. So there is no action needed to be taken this evening. This is for informational purposes only for the city council and to the public. There will be no, no votes taken this evening in regards to this, but from the advice of our city attorney and from the, my, for the state statutes, I am going to read verbatim the exact email that was sent to all of the city council members on Monday, on Monday, August 14th, or, excuse me, August 8th. Council members, attached for your review is the amendment to ordinance number 1918, as was requested by Alderman Oberlin at the August 1st, 2022 city council meeting. Pursuant to my statutory veto power, I am returning ordinance 1918 to the council. The reasons for my decision to veto this ordinance were provided in my comments during the meeting of August 1st, 2022, and are listed below. Number one, having the finance director report to an elected official would be a poor management practice that will create confusion, create conflict, create inefficiencies that will disrupt the day-to-day operations of the office. Number two, in my opinion, the amendments of ordinance number 1918 are not good government. How do you justify the efficiency of having a finance director? Pursuant to 65 ILCS 5-3.1-40-55, ordinance 1918 will be placed on the agenda for reconsideration, for reconsideration at the council meeting scheduled for September 6th, 2022. Again, this is informational purposes only at this time. I have no other further agenda items. Certainly would try to entertain any questions that anyone would have.
City Attorney?
Yes.
According to the statute, is there anything necessary for the council to do tonight?
Nothing. The, the disapproved motion or ordinance is to be returned the next regular meeting, not less than five days from its passage, that's this meeting. Section 3.1-40-50 says that the reconsideration in passing over veto shall be reconsidered by the City Council at the next regular meeting, following the regular meeting at which the City Council receives the mayor's written objection. If after reconsideration, 2/3 of all the Alderpersons then holding office on the City Council agree at that regular meeting to pass an ordinance resolution or motion notwithstanding the mayor's refusal to approve it, then it shall become effective. The vote on the question of passage over the mayor's veto shall be by yays and nays, and shall be recorded in the journal.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Question, Mr. Steph. When I read the 5/3.1-40-45, it appears to me that that, that ordinance and veto applies, by my read anyway, that it, the mayor may disapprove entirely of an ordinance resolution or motion making an appro, making an appropriation. This does not make an appropriation. And I think that, do I, I read this, and the way I had some information from IML, was that if it doesn't involve an appropriation or an expenditure, that it's not vetoable. But in the case that it had an appropriation, mayor would have the right or privilege to perhaps adjust those numbers. In this case, I don't think this is even a valid reason to veto.
If you read the first paragraph of 40-45, all resolutions and motions, one, that create any liability against the city, two, that provide for the expenditure or appropriation of its money, or three, to sell any city or school property. That refers to all resolutions and motions that do 1, 2, or 3. This is not a resolution or a motion that does 1, 2, or 3. After the clause 3, to sell any city or school property, there's a comma, and it says, "and all ordinances passed by the City Council shall be deposited with the city clerk." So my legal opinion is that if it's a resolution or motion that does one of those three things, it can be vetoed by the mayor. If it is an ordinance, it can be vetoed by the mayor. So it applies to all ordinances, which this is an ordinance. The clause that you're referring to is if the mayor chooses to disapprove of an appropriation ordinance resolution, because you can make an appropriation by ordinance, you can also do it by resolution or by motion. It says that the mayor may disapprove entirely of an ordinance resolution or motion making an appropriation, but it doesn't refer to that as an exclusive or limiting factor.
When you say the comma "and" all, as opposed to comma "or" all, it seems to me that the qualifiers are 1, 2, 3, and ordinances.
It's referring to resolutions and motions that do 1, 2, or 3, and all ordinances.
I read that differently, but, okay.
Okay, moving on to our City Clerk's report. Christine Rocha-Hawke, good morning, Chris.
We'll be moving on, I just want to ask you a question. Because you always call the majority rules, and I guess this time, the majority doesn't rule to you, I guess you pick and choose what's going to rule to you, so good job. We can move on.
I've sat here as mayor for 14 years and have not vetoed one item.
There's always the first time.
There's always the first time.
Yep, you got it.
And that's why I reached out to the City Attorney.
And again, like City Council, the majority will rule.
And that's why I reached out to the City Attorney for advice, because I've never had to veto and go through this process before.
And I'm glad you are.
And you're absolutely correct.
Yes.
The majority will rule.
It is your right.
In three weeks. Chris?
Thank you. The agenda item we have on for a Black Party Back-to-School Event has to be canceled at this time. If it is rescheduled, we will let you know and put it back on the agenda. Other than that, I have nothing to report.
Correct.
Oh, I'm sorry, I don't even have that, that's, sorry, I don't have that information. Garage sale permits need to be picked up in the Clerk's Office, Monday through Friday, from 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. And the garage sale is August 16th, is the last day to have it on the agenda.
August 16th to 21st.
Yeah, the last day is the 16th to have it on there.
On the main.
Any other questions? You can contact the Clerk's Office at 815-741-5100. Thank you. And thank you for reminding of that.
Any other questions of the clerk? All right, thanks, Chris. Moving on to our City Treasurer, Glenn Conklin. Good evening, Glenn.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to report regular and overtime payroll from July 4th, 2022, to July 17th of 2022, in the amount of $241,309.06. I do seek your approval and ask for a motion as such to approve the list of bills issued through 8/11/2022, in the amount of $537,840.62. So moved is presented.
Second.
Motion by Alderperson Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Sepiti, for the approval of the list of bills. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Rocha.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
And Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
We'll be going into executive session at 7:44 p.m.